Good evening, welcome to all of you. It's good to see you here this evening. This evening, we have six board members present, and I remind our board members and viewing guests that we are conducting this meeting from the Cornwall Lebanon School District at the high school, and we are live streaming it on the Cornwall Lebanon School District website. At this time, I ask that we all please stand for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and before I turn it over to Dr. Demensik, I am just going to congratulate Mrs. Diefenbach, Mr. Zug, and Ms. Oziak for being re-elected to the board. And also, we have Mrs. Betsy Garrett, who will be joining us for reorganization on December 1st, and we congratulate her as well. So at this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Dr. Demensik.
Thank you, Mrs. Schlegel, and good evening to everyone in attendance and anyone watching on the livestream. As noted, this is the public work session, our public November work session of the Cornwall Lebanon School District Board of School Directors, and at our meeting, the administration will be presenting items to the board for discussion, review, and consideration. At the conclusion of our meeting, there will be an opportunity for anyone in attendance to ask questions about any of the items that are discussed this evening. Before we begin with the presentation that is on our agenda, I have just a few comments to share, and that is, we've had some recent events since our last meeting. These include our National Honor Society induction here at the high school. We did host the Cedar Bowl here in our campus before it looks like, at our stadium, before it looks like what it does right now with everything down, and we did win. The first marking period did end, and report cards have been available online since November 6th. We also had a professional learning day at the end of October, and we just finished our middle school play at the musical, at the Middle School, Alice in Wonderland. Very nicely done with a lot of students participating over the course of several days last week, and then also Saturday and Sunday. This week, as we look ahead, we do have on Thursday our breakfast program for Cornwall Lebanon School District veterans, residents, and military families. We had just an incredible response this year, so we have had to close reservations just based on space. Information was emailed with the confirmations and the details today, and Mr. Timothy Urban will be our guest speaker. Our next meeting will be next Monday, November 17th, in this room, and that will be livestreamed as well. I should also note that in January renovations are scheduled to begin in different parts of the building at the high school, and one of those things will necessitate us, as I mentioned last month. We will be moving our music programs, particularly our band, to here in the LGI. So we will be relocating our public work sessions and board meetings to South Lebanon Elementary School over on South Fifth Avenue. We will continue with the livestreaming, but we will begin on January 5th with our work session being located there, and that will be for, it looks like at least through June. That may go till August, just with some of the things I'm hearing. I know originally we'd set till June, but it might go till August, just getting logistics with moving back into here. So we may have to have that meeting out there as well. Got a lot of items that'll be discussed at tonight's public work session. These include the high school renovations and the stadium facility improvements. We're also going to talk a little bit about the Cornwall Elementary Traffic Pattern Project. We do have our food service semi-annual report. We'll talk some about finance and budget and just timelines. We actually have three budgets we're going to talk about. We're going to talk about here with the, when you think about, we're going to talk about the audit, talk about this year's budget a little bit, and then look ahead, which, so we kind of have three years overlapping in some ways because of just circumstances that we have right now. But we're going to begin first with our presentation on our audit report from Mr. Jeffrey Kowalczek, and he's going to be representing Barbara Kane Thornton, who conducted the audit for Cornwall Lebanon.
Thank you so much for having me out this evening. Soon as I looked over, I realized I should have done this before. I'm delighted to be here presenting the results of your financial statement audit for the year ended June 30, 2025. This is our first year in a while working with your district, so it was a pleasure to get to come in and see all the growth in the district and everything that's been going on, and get to re-meet your team and your district. And I'm delighted to let you know that based on the results of our testing, which is a combination of internal control process and transactional and analytical testing, we are anticipating issuing a clean or unmodified opinion on the financial statements. Additionally, because you expend more than $750,000 that originates at the federal government level, you're also subject to the Federal Single Audit Act, which requires additional compliance testing, and we are also going to be issuing an unmodified or clean opinion on compliance with your major federal programs. Additionally in that, we did not identify any material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, or other reportable matters to bring to the board tonight. So really pleased to let you know that we'll be issuing sort of a clean, clean opinion, as I call it colloquially. I said throughout that that we are anticipating, and I want to talk a little bit about the timeline for finalization, because for the single audit, one of the important things that the federal government puts together every year is the federal compliance supplement, and this year was always going to be a tricky year for the federal government to put it together, because the compliance supplement, which is the document that tells us what we're supposed to look at as part of testing every major federal program, runs for a 12-month period from June 30 to the following June 29. So this year's compliance supplement should cover fiscal year ends from June 30, 2025 through June 29, 2026. While December 15, 2025, there's changes to the government auditing standards, and as a result, this year's compliance supplement had to contemplate both sets of rules. So the federal government was always going to be late with it. In August, they put out a draft so that we and other auditors could begin our testing, and at that point in time said that they anticipated the finals would be issued in October. Of course, the federal government shut down, so they've not been able to issue those finals. At this point, it's a waiting game to see when the government reopens, and then after that, how many additional weeks they need to finalize. But we are essentially going to be in a holding pattern where we are comfortable with all the testing, but under regulations, we are not permitted to issue the federal audit until they've given us the instructions in their final form. So we don't anticipate any additional testing or changes will be needed, but that is why I am using the "will be issuing" as opposed to "have issued." Another thing that is new this year, because there's always new accounting standards, we're always looking to make things a little more complicated. This year's new standard was on compensated absences, which is accrued but unpaid sick and vacation time, and things along those rules. The old rule was that you recorded sick and vacation time at whatever rate it was vested at for payout on departure. So if a teacher had 10 days of sick time, and at the end of their tenure, they've been here, and I apologize, I forget your exact rules, but if the rule is after 10 years you get a payout if you reach age 65 at $50 a day, then you would record it, once they reach 10 years, at $50 a day times however many days they had accrued thus far. Under the new rule, which sounds simple, you're required to record every day or hour of accrued PTO at whatever rate it is more likely than not to be paid at. Now, if you think about any employee, they use more of their PTO than they get paid out for, and your current pay rate is higher than whatever the retirement payout is. So not only are we using a higher dollar amount to value each day of PTO, the district had to do a study of people who've retired or left the district in the last three years to get an understanding over their employee life. How much of their sick time that they earned was paid out while they were an employee? How much was paid out as a retirement or buyout package, and how much was lost? And then use those percentages to figure out for all the current employees what their estimated future compensated absence payouts will be, based on what's been earned to date. All that is to say, this year, your district, like every other district, recognized an increase in the value of compensated absence liability. For your district, it was about $5.4 million, which was sort of right in the middle of where we're seeing other districts. Now, I want to highlight, this is only on the entity-wide financial statements, the full accrual statements, which is where things like your Peasars net pension liability live, your long-term debt payable, as well as your capital assets. So it's not a huge impact on your statements as a whole, because there's so many large things on there, and more importantly, it doesn't impact your budgetary statements at all. So where you look in your general fund, where you end the year, is not at all impacted by this new standard, but because there's language on it in the notes to the financial statements, I wanted to make you aware of that. And to really quickly touch on those results, the last page of the document that I believe was uploaded. The district ended this year with an overall positive net position on the entity-wide basis of about $8 million. This was an improvement from the prior year because of a number of things, and chief among them was this year, you had a substantial number of capital outlays at the fund level, which are expenditures to the funds, but do not create a reduction in net position, because they are just turning a cash asset into another kind of asset. So this year, you saw a big increase in your overall net position. At the fund level, for the general fund, you also did see an increase, but it was not as substantial. You'll see that for the year, the budget called for budgeted revenues of about $103 million, and you ended up about 7% or 8% ahead of that with actual revenues of $111 million. Of that, the two biggest chunks were interest earnings, which was, this was the first year we started to see that come down after two or three years of big numbers in the interest earnings, and your district, like all other districts, budgeted very conservatively. And also on the state side, because your district has to make the budget before we know what the state is going to fund. Your district, like all other districts, budgeted conservatively, and there ended up being more right-to-learn money available than was originally budgeted. So what we see there is a couple of items where the district budgeted conservatively, and in this one year was fortunate enough to have results that exceeded that budget. On the expenditure side, you'll see your expenditures were within 1% of budget. So expenditure-wise, the district clearly has all the controls in place to be watching and ensuring that the funding is not exceeding what is approved by the board. At this point, I'd like to open it up to any questions anybody may have about the audit, the financial results, or anything else that I might be able to touch on.
Just to note, this is, this audit, of course, is for the '24-'25 year. We're already well into '25-'26, and we have a lot of unknowns with our current budget as we're waiting to see what the results of the state funding are, as well as, you know, any changes in federal funding. So, I mean, this is always just a snapshot, a look at that particular period in time.
That is correct.
So as of right now, as he mentioned, we have our audit in draft. So what I'd like to do is wait until the federal guidelines are released, and they can issue a final draft for us, and maybe have that approved in December instead of November, because it doesn't really sound like even if the government would open up next week, that if we would have...
Is December even going to happen? Because our meeting's December 1st, or could we be looking more like January?
I, yeah, unfortunately, I feel it's very unlikely that the compliance supplement will come out before Thanksgiving, even if they open up this week.
So we're probably looking at January, then, if that were, just because our...
Possibly. I know we do have to certify that we had an auditor, an independent audit review with our AFR, so I'm not quite sure what's going to happen there.
I don't think anyone knows.
And we need to have that by December 31st, so there's a lot of things that need to come together here to make it work.
We'll have a motion on to certify that we had that, and that we can approve the final report in January. That might be what we end up doing.
Yeah, PDE may also come out with guidance to modify their requirements, because it's something all impacting 460 of the 530 districts. So we'll wait with bated breath.
We'll have to figure that out, so.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Questions or comments from the board?
Great job, Jean.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, I should have started with that. A huge thank you to Jean, and to Wes, who I know isn't here tonight, and the entire business office staff. They were fully forthcoming throughout the audit, provided us everything we requested in a timely manner, complete and completed, which, believe it or not, is sometimes a struggle. So I really appreciate everything that they did, because I know it's easy for me to stand here and go, "Looks good," but it only looks good because they've put a huge amount of effort into keeping it moving throughout the year.
A huge thank you to Wes for putting together the new calculations for the compensated absences. That was quite a feat. Now that he has a template in place, it'll be a lot easier. We had to understand the rules in order to put that together.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Wes, and you as well, and everybody, Jean.
All right.
Okay. All right, very good.
All right, thank you so much. I hope you have a great rest of your meeting and a great Thanksgiving soon.
Thank you, Mike West.
I know you have another meeting before then, but...
Thank you. Okay. We're going to continue on, then, with our items and buildings and grounds. And we've got some updates here about the high school renovations, as well as the stadium, and some other items, so...
Okay.
Go ahead there, Miss Sess, so you can take away with these items.
Somebody was distracting me on the side. All right, the first one is the high school renovations. We do have two change orders, one's a general contractor, Low Bar, $10,915, $16. This is regarding auditorium. When they look to order materials for the auditorium, they noticed that the ceiling materials were not considering the fact that it's going to be at a pool. So they wanted to order anti-corrosive type of materials for that ceiling, and I'm glad that they asked, so we were able to put in materials that are non-corrosive. The second one is the mechanical contractor, North Bay Mechanical, chilled pipe replacements. So once they got into the area in Phase 1, they noticed that there were piping that needed to be replaced. So you're going to see this with each phase, and we're going to be evaluating each phase to see what needs to be replaced. So at this point, for Phase 1, we're looking at $47,462 to do the replacement for those piping that is necessary. Just an update on where we are. I thought it would be nice to look at these different phases, since we're coming up on the completion of one of the first major phases. Phase 1A, it's called, is going to be completed in December, around December 24th. That includes the library, around 12, 13 classrooms. We also have the high school technology office, as well as the new bathroom, which was converted from a classroom. We also have Phase 1B completion date is January 31st, so it's kind of overlapping, happening at the same time, but it's extended a little more, and that's looking at the new multipurpose room and new mechanical room. And then once those are, actually, the ones are going to, the Phase 2 is going to overlap with 1B and start right after Christmas, which is the science wing, 12, 13 classrooms next to the Falcon Connector. So if you're coming from the connector, it's going to be that hallway there that they're going to be working on, as well as the music wing next to the high school main entrance, which is one of the reasons why we have to move to South Lebanon, is because the music department needs a place to put their items. So that's kind of just a quick snapshot of where we are with the phasing for a high school.
That's a good summary, and, you know, just to put it in the big picture, the items that we're going to do, and we are going to have just this quarter going into the connector. That's it, because the other ends of that hallway are going to be shut down when you go back towards the CAF there. And of course, the whole music section, that whole part of it will be shut off, and then when we get into March, the auditorium will be shut down. So a lot happening here as we move. We do have, we've contracted with assistance for moving, as well as utilizing some of our own staff, because this has to happen in that turnaround time over holiday, Christmas break. So that starts December 26th, I think is the first day where we're in there, and moving things back into, to get the new classrooms set up, and then making sure that everything's out of the other ones, that they can begin renovations. So this is going to be an ongoing process, we know about it, there's a good plan in place. Mr. Brickley, Mr. Groff, and everybody has sort of put this to place and communicated to people what this will be.
Did you say the auditorium's going to be shut down in March?
In March.
So what about the spring musical and...
They're relocated, they'll be at the middle school.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, they'll have to be at the middle school this year. You know, at one point, we were going to lose that, we're going to lose something at some point, and we try to balance that with whatever season and the number of events that are going on. So our choices are, in terms of the phasing, we lose it in the fall, or we lose it in the spring, and it's just, and it also matters in terms of how the mechanicals work. So that will be shut down. That means that we have other end-of-the-year events, too, that will need to be relocated elsewhere. Yeah, we have some, we have some other events, just like the awards banquets and things like that, that'll have to be, we'll have to figure out where they're going to be, because we will not, we will not have use of the auditorium. But nothing that we can't, that's insurmountable. We're going to have some of those inconveniences, but we'll work through them.
So am I correct in what you're saying, that the first phase will be completed when you have up there, and then the second phase is over the holidays, when the classrooms move from the connector over, and then others move, or is that not the movement? How is that going to...
Well, the Phase 1B is ongoing during this time, those are the new rooms. The duration of, the other one starts then... The duration of, the other one starts then on December 26th, so that's right, over the holidays, then that moves. So, it's not actually going to start on December 26th because we have to get all the movement done over the holidays.
Over the hol-
So, that's, there's some
From the connector over, and then
Yeah.
the teachers that will be moving to the connector have to also be going to the connector over that period of time?
That's what will happen over the holidays, yes.
A lot of transition.
Yeah, that is a lot.
One going one way, one going the other way.
Yeah, that, that is a lot.
So, you know, things are ready to go, and then we'll move them in, move them out, that kind of thing. We have some of the stuff that's in storage. We have furniture deliveries that are going to be coming also in December. So, there's a lot of pieces of this puzzle just to coordinate.
And you say you have arranged for people, for people to come in and help with that process, or?
We did contract with a company just for moving, just for some of the bulk items, just on certain days, to make sure that we can get that done in that timeframe. So, obviously, that helps with making sure that we can start back with classrooms and teaching, but it also helps, too, because we need to get that movement done so that the contractors can get in there and begin the next phase and keep the project moving.
How will you account for the staff that's losing holiday time, like vacation time? Are they going to get?
This would be custodial staff and other staff that would be doing the actual physical moving.
Normally be there? Okay. So, teachers aren't really?
We, that's, no, this would not be teachers that were doing that, really.
Is the, the mechanical change order for the piping because the original plan was to leave the existing piping in? Is that?
Yes.
What that, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, and so what happened is, is when you look at it, it was covered in insulation. You couldn't see the full extent of the corrosion of that. I think a couple of you got a chance to tour, and you could see how damaged some of that pipe was. Some might be original. We're not sure exactly the age, so that was what caused that because it was not in the original one. There was already a cost, that cost deficit was already based on what was included in the bid, that if they ran into anything, so that was based on a formula for piping, as well as the labor involved, and the size of the piping.
How many phases is this going to affect? Like, we said Phase 1 was a $47,462. How many more phases will the
For the piping?
Yeah.
Don't know exactly. What I would suspect is that we'll probably have more in the older sections of the building rather than in the newer sections, meaning that when we get over into where we're heading right now in the Science Wing, hopefully, we will not have a whole lot because that was put on in, in the mid-'90s. But we may have that in other sections of the building. And we're only going to know once they get in there and they start tearing it apart. We do have, within this budget, you know, within the budget for this project, these kind of contingencies were, we, we didn't know what. And, of course, you know, we're monitoring them to see how much they are relative to it, but we did have a significant amount of funds available for these types of things that we knew may be a possibility in this project. Like the sinkholes that we had over the summer, some of those things, you know, it's, those are things that, unfortunately, this is a big one. Oh, that's done, that was part of the connector, so, yeah, that was a
Different job.
Different project, but that was an example, though, of exactly
Very good example, though.
one, a contingency that
Thank, very good, thank you.
And that project still came in, that project still came in on budget.
It's still here.
It's stone at the stadium, yeah.
Speaking of the stadium, and I'm just going to ask for clarification. I think I know, but I want to make sure. Is that completion at the end of the school year? Is that correct?
That completion
Is that the anticipated completion time?
The actual official completion would be the end of July of next year. For, for, yes, for, for the final completed project. There's, what we're hoping to have is continued use of that in the springtime, and it's just going to take a lot of coordination to make that happen, which is why, because of all the construction going on there, and I, I should say this, we've already notified some groups, or will be, that we will be limiting outside use of our stadium. For our students, for our events, we want to certainly utilize that, but for outside groups, obviously, if you look at our stadium right now, that would be very challenging because we want also to make sure that it's a safe environment. That's very difficult when we have other groups that are using it, and we don't have our staff here at all, so.
So, we'll utilize it for, over the spring for
That's the plan.
the high school usage?
That is the plan, yeah.
And for commencement, for graduation?
We expect to know more about this here in the coming weeks if we're going to have any problems with that. I think by, I would hope by our December meeting, and weather is a big factor, that's true, whether or not that delays a lot of this, if we have a lot of bad weather, that could significantly impact that project. More so probably than the building because a lot of the work that we do here would be interior.
You, you could look into booking the largest auditorium in the county. Just saying.
Are you offering a deal?
It's a possi- It's a possibility.
We'll see.
Yeah, something to think about, for sure.
We'll have to think about a lot of things, but I think, I think within the next few weeks is when we'll know a little bit more about that. And then, of course, you're right, the weather's a factor. Okay. And then, you've got some pictures here to share, too.
Yes, I have some pictures.
We've got some great photos here. Any, any other questions, though, before Ms. Sents shares some of the photos we have?
These pictures are from the Fedavia Board Report.
You know, you look at that picture on the right, we talked about the coloring of the terraza, and you can see some of that is just residue that's there in that line, but you can see the cleaned area right around the edge of it, the difference between that and the others, because the layers of wax are ground off. Pretty significant. And I think what Mr. Brickley said, that in the future, we're not, we're going to use another coating rather than the wax to prevent that kind of buildup that will also protect them. They make some new products now. But just going through there the other day, it looked, it looked pretty sharp. These are the additions out in the back. Shortly after the floors were poured.
So, that was the high school. The update for the stadium, we do not have any change orders this month for the stadium. South Side concession stand is, is now demoed. Existing fieldhouse renovations being, so inside the existing fieldhouse, we're doing renovations. And then, the North Side new concession stand in progress. It's really coming together, I believe, with the pictures that you'll see. You'll have the roof on the concession stand, the new one. So, the first two pictures is the demoing of the Music Aids concession stand, the one that's right next to the fieldhouse. And then, the other one is just showing there is no concession stand any longer. If you proceed, and then this is, on the left, is the switchback for the, the ramp up to the new concession stand. And then, there's a good view of the, the North Side concession stand coming together. The next ones, you'll see that they have the, the roof on now. And then, the next one, I did swap out Fedavia's picture with a complete picture of the, demo of the, it just looks very odd, but that's the bleachers completely demoed. And you can see the new concession stand in the back. Question, with all of that steel and aluminum that was taken out from the bleachers, do we get any kind of credit for, like, scrap?
That's all part of the bid.
Okay.
So, the contractors, in terms of what they get from that, and, you know, for us to do that separately, I think I asked this question of somebody, it would have, the labor versus what we would have received would have been a wash.
We don't have the equipment either, like, the vehicles to be able to haul it, so.
So, that's all calculated as part of that bid.
That's pretty much, I think, the update for the stadium. The next item, maybe the last item in this section, is the Cornwall Elementary traffic pattern. Wanted to give you an update on that. We moved rather quickly for this to resolve the issue of the backlog of traffic. We did have Martin paving awarded in October by you, and then the substantial completion was this past Friday. All we are waiting for now is the entrance gate to the area. And we're hoping to start using the path on the 17th. If you go to the next, here's a couple of pictures of what it looks like. This is the paved parking lot, and then the section that goes along the tree line, a turn to go towards the, towards the elementary school. I believe that's it.
I think so. So, that's what we're looking at. So, the plan is that we'll get communications out with some maps, and we'll start using that, as long as, we need to get that gate in place, but once that's ready to go, then we can start using that. Questions about any of the buildings and grounds items?
I'm just going to say thank you for moving quickly on the Cornwall, on that, because that, that was a real issue, and I think that's going to be much appreciated in solving some traffic pattern problems.
That's the plan.
So, thanks for moving so quickly on that.
And thanks to Mr. Brickley to assist with that, as well as stuck back engineering.
Yeah, there were a lot of pieces that had to come together to get that, those bid documents ready to go out.
This was a bid, yeah.
We had a big response to that bid, too. We had a pretty good response, and it came in, you know, where we expected. But, yes, we're glad, hopefully, this is going to help to solve that traffic issue down there. It's going to be better than what it was. I don't know that anything will completely solve.
We'll see.
We'll see.
Be positive.
Okay. Anything else about buildings and grounds? All right, we'll go on to community relations, curriculum, and staff development. I think we just have a notice to give here, Dr. Rackley.
Good evening, everybody. We just have one quick update. When we met in October, we hedged, we had anticipated being able to share completed data with you this evening, but as of today, our future-ready index still hasn't been publicly released. So, since we're still waiting for that, we wanted to hold on P-VAS and, and share all of our data at the same time, instead of sharing growth data tonight and achievement data, combined with growth data and attendance and some of those other pieces separately. So, we want to do that all at the same time. But I did just want to give you a quick update. P-VAS data was updated in October and released, and then our local assessment data, which means the Acadian's data that we use and the ExactPath data that we use and collect here in the district, and then upload to P-VAS, was released two weeks ago. So, we do have pieces of our data. We're still just waiting for that future-ready index piece, which kind of ties it all together. So, we'll update you as soon as we have the opportunity, once the data's officially released.
Seems to be a little, little pattern, but, you know, with, with the audit, but we're, once we have that information, then we'll, we'll get that. So, we're looking at the January work session. Okay. Extracurricular. We have some Sunday use of facilities here.
Okay, so, we have two, three, four to approve next week. Falcon Youth Wrestling Club to use the high school gym, Sundays, February 1st, to 12:00 PM to 9:00 PM for the youth wrestling tournament. North Cornwall Rec Association to use South Lebanon Elementary School baseball fields for practices and games, Monday through Friday, March 9th, 2026, through October 30th, 2026, 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Also, Saturdays, March 7th through October 31st, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And then, Sunday, March 8th through October 25th, 2026, 12:00 PM to 8:00 PM. We also have our football team to use the stadium, Sundays, March 15th through May 3rd, 2026, 1:00 PM to 2:45 for spring workouts. And we also have elite baseball to use Cedar Crest High School baseball field, Saturdays and Sundays, May 16th through October 25th, 2026, and Saturdays, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Sundays, 1:00 PM to 8:00 PM for baseball games. So, those will be on next week for your approval. We do have two overnight field trips to be approved. Cedar Crest High School students to Johnstown, PA, Thursday through Saturday, January 8th to the 10th, 2026, for competition cheer state tournament. And we also have high school students to Willansport Area High School, Thursday to Saturday, March 5th to the 7th, 2026, for the PMEA Central Region Orchestra, and that will also be on next week for approval.
Ones that we've done before. Okay. Any questions about any of the extracurricular items? All right, we'll go on to finance and business. Keep on going there, Ms. Sents.
Got to clear my throat. All right, so, there's going to be a lot of information. I'm sorry. I'll try to break it out a little bit for you to help you kind of remember. Capital reserve fund, I always look at our capital reserve fund and what we're looking at right now, and then next year for that fund, and then we'll go into the general fund, capital projects. So, right now, from what was approved previously, we still have the chiller replacement happening. I believe they're going to start the last week of November, and I think the chiller's supposed to be delivered on December 1st or something. So, hope, we should be able to have it in clear time enough before we need it. So, that's, that project at Cornwall, and then we also have a traffic pattern paving. So, this is what needs to be issued yet, because, again, it was just completed on Friday. So, those are the current projects that are pending right now for completion. And then, if you go to the next one, this is what we're considering next summer. We don't have any roof projects because we are in a good place right now with roofs, size on campus, as part of the renovation projects. So, Cornwall, we're looking at a fire panel, possible fire panel replacement, possibly this summer. Carpet tile, we had several requests to replace carpet with tile. So, we're going to kind of look at that. That's why there's a question mark there, because Mr. Brickley's going to look at the different buildings and, along with the principal, determine what is the best action to, like, to do first. Ebenezer replacement, downspout gutters. So, I believe these are the original gutters, and there is a lot of leaking around the areas, and you can even tell on the ground where it's, where it's leaking. So, we'd like to get that replaced, and that would be the, all of it around the whole perimeter. And then, also, bleachers, still evaluating. That was a request by the principal to replace the bleachers. They are originals, and it is getting difficult to find replacement parts for it. So, again, we're looking, considering it, maybe not a final, but at least we're looking at these items. Again, this is a carpet-to-tile replacement to sack area, to classrooms in the sack area. South Lebanon Elementary is also looking at phases in, in carpet-to-tile replacement. Union Canal Elementary School parking lot repairs and resurfacing. This was requested last year, and then we put it out to possibly this year. Again, these are all tentative, but these are things that we're looking at for the capital reserve fund. Just to have an idea of where we are with the fund, as of October 31st, we were looking at just shy of $3.5 million with those approved capital projects that are pending that we talked about earlier, plus the annual allocation that we usually include in every general fund budget. We would be looking at $3.7 million in that account. And then, the proposed capital projects that I just talked to you about is about $300,000. So, right now, if we would even look at doing what we just looked at, we would have about $3.4 in that account.
Quick question, that land lease, what, what land is that referencing?
The farm across the street. So, we, we treat that as an investment.
Yeah.
So, what we receive from the farmer that leases it, we put into the capital reserve fund. It's almost like earning interest. That's what we kind of look at it.
That's pretty impressive, considering
It's not that full
Oh.
No, not even, no, not even close. There's an annual allocation that I usually put in every year in the general fund budget.
Okay.
Plus that land lease.
Say, wow, what a return on investment that is.
That's not, that's not
No, no, no.
That would be a really
Yeah. No, majority of that is the allocation.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so that is the capital reserve fund for the general fund.
Just a quick comment. I think what you can see that what, what we're trying to do here I think what you can see that what, what we're trying to do here is to make sure that we have a regular updating and keeping things current, making sure that we don't have buildings that get too far behind. You know, we know that we've got renovations here on the campus. And we talk about the chiller at Cornwall, we talk about the floor and we talk about some of these different things. It's just to try, the fire panel at Cornwall, we know that that could fail at any time. If that fails, that's lead time on that, that's a problem. We can't have people in a building without it. So that's why we wanna try to, it's getting older, we wanna try to plan on replacing these things, so we don't run into those problems. You know, we talk about the projects we have on the campus and Mrs. Hensel mentioned this is when we look long-term, you know, those are all tentative dates when we get to our elementary schools. So I think that's what we're trying to do, is make sure that they're, they're well maintained here in the meantime.
And that's what we hold the capital reserve fund for, is those investments into, back into the buildings, making sure that they are staying up to date. Now, if we proceed to the general fund, these are more equipment that isn't really associated with the building, per se, that I usually have a certain amount in the budget every year for this, these particular pieces of equipment. And a lot of these are in cycles, so we create replacement cycles to make sure that we keep up with the equipment. Technology, devices, every year we get new devices for the freshmen, kindergarten iPads, making sure that we get new kindergartners. There's kindergartners this year, we'll be moving to first grade, we'll take their devices with them. If you know, we do have tech smoothing. If you remember, we do have a technology assigned fund balance, so we are using that piece, we are using the fund balance for that purchase. Office staff laptops, keeping laptops up to date. So this is part of Dr. Murray's recycling of the, the different devices. Firewall appliance, things that are needed. Again, these are all tentative, but with, this is what we're considering for next year. Copier replacement, Ebenezer rooftop units replaced, we gotta look at that to make sure that these are rooftop units. We do need to definitely replace at least two of them right now, but making sure that we know that elementary is one of the buildings that's, this elementary is one of the buildings that'll be renovated eventually. So those are things you have to consider too. Playground swings, swings unit, they are lacking swings over at Union Canal, so we're looking at possibly providing another set over there. Teacher's desk replacement, the principal over there provided me with a, a request to phase over to replace desks. We did not replace them as a part of the renovation. High school, replacement of music instruments. Mr. Groff put in a nice replacement cycle that he's replacing music instruments every year, so this is a part of his phasing. Go to the next slide, I believe we have grounds. Mr. Brickley's looking at slowly replacing some of the equipment that has not been replaced in a long time. Salt spreader, air fryer, he is currently renting and for the amount that we're renting it, we could probably buy one in maybe three years, so that's what we're, things that he's looking at. And then the workman dump cart. Maintenance, golf cart for the campus, we do have one, we're gonna push out to the elementary school. Athletic hurdles replacement, again, Mr. Disner is looking at different equipment that he has and making sure there's a replacement cycle included in that. And then a sideline pro box is, is a request of Mr. Disner, where you would review plays after the fact along the sidelines. So he is requesting that. So again, these are tentative, these are things that we need to consider as part of the pie when we put the budget together, but we have a ways away from, from putting that together. But we will be working over it, working on this to see where it fits into the budget.
Questions? It's a lot of items, but we're trying to make sure that we, so many pieces to this, again, just that we regularly do that. We don't get rid of anything that's working, we keep it. In fact, that's what we're gonna do here, even in renovations, if it's not broke, we're gonna use it. But at some point, we have to plan for end of, end of life of different equipment.
And we do have a process in place where all principals, department supervisors submit their requests. Some things are put up here, other things we're putting to the side and in a couple of years, it depends on what the needs are.
Okay.
The next item. And then this is, this is just a quick shot, snapshot of major renovations. Obviously, the Falcon Connector is complete. High school, we're looking at summer of 2028. Middle school, we're hoping it would be spring 28 to summer of 2030. If so, then we would be looking at moving the administrative building up to the Falcon Connector's first floor in 2030, maybe 2031. Again, it all depends on what happens, little ways out yet. And then the Cornwall Elementary is what we're looking at as the next renovation. But we are gonna address things as we go along here, such as the chiller that is, is being replaced this, this winter. Go to the next slide, I think it's budget estimates. All right, so challenges for Pennsylvania school districts. It's pretty much the same every year with one added, obvious, is not having a state budget this year. So Act One timeline, that's why we're talking to you right now, so Cornwall Lebanon makes sure that they meet the timeline of Act One. And we do have to decide by January 31st whether we are going to adopt the resolution to not exceed the Act One index. So those are things that we need to look at as we're moving along here to make sure that we're on hitting those deadlines. Also hiring certain positions, obviously there are certain positions that are harder to, to find than others. Significant costs for third-party cyber schools, I'll go into a little detail on that. Special education placements, we're always looking at, at those needs for those kiddos and making sure that we have support in place for those kiddos. Budgeting for facilities improvements, we are looking at what we just talked about, like part of our renovations plans, but we're also looking at the CTC, they had come and presented to us. So those are the things that we need to think about. And then, of course, the state budget not happening yet. So what does that mean for Cornwall Lebanon? If you go to the next slide, this is just an update of where we are with subsidies that we would've had by now. The impasse is 120-plus days old. We're looking at 11.6 million in subsidies that we have not received and we would have by now. State subsidies is a majority of it, 11.4 out of 34 million that we're expecting. And that's made up of your basic education, your special education subsidies, as well as the state share of social security and retirement. Also the Ready to Learn grant, we should be receiving funds for that, as well as the transportation subsidy. Federal subsidies is 230,000 that we have not received, which we wouldn't have on a normal basis. And this is just for the 24, 25 that we had already spent and we would be getting reimbursed for. Based on that information, we, we are missing about 50 to 60,000 dollars in interest earns that we use as a part of our operating budget. We seem to be in a good place right now. I would say probably February or March is where we would probably feel more of, of this shutdown, but this is where we are right now. For next year, again, this is high-level, very rough estimates, budget to budget, you always wanna look at budget to budget. Property assessed values, we're looking at 0.5% increase. State and federal funding, we are looking at, when, when we put these numbers together, we were looking at what we budgeted this year, 'cause that's all we have. And then I, I'm assuming as, as a part of these numbers that I'm gonna provide to you, I'm assuming that we are receiving the Ready to Learn adequacy grant next year. Expenditures, budget to budget, estimated based on current operations and conditions. Also look at salaries based on compensation plans, agreements and schedules. Employer retirement rate is estimated to go up 0.72%. It is 34% right now, so for every, every hundred dollars we spend, we pay Peasars 34 dollars. Medical insurance costs, last year's and this year's activities, we gotta consider those, current and future debt service needs, as well as capital reserve. And then make up the assigned fund balance that we use in 25, 26. Salaries, just to look, like, some of the things that we think about is reviewing the personnel needs based on student needs, employee healthcare, employer retirement. Professional services, we're, I mean, a significant amount in professional services is Lancaster Lebanon IU, CISP, we have a grant there, we're fortunate to have that support. Other student supports, again, we need to make sure that we have all of those services in place and have the funding for it. Transportation and tuition to others, tuition to others would be other LEAs and also approve private schools such as Vista, New Story, those contracts that we get approved in the beginning of every year. Placements based on students' needs, Lebanon CTC, looking at the enrollment trends. Also, again, preparation for Cornwall Lebanon's portion of the debt service. And then third-party cyber school tuition cost, increase in enrollment, and then the per-student cost. So if you wanna go to the next slide, then we're gonna just touch a little bit on the cyber schools. From the right to the left, so tuition costs from 23, 24 to 24, 25. Just from 22, 23 to 23, 24, it increased 325,000 dollars and these are actual amounts. 24, 25, from 23, 24, was 872,000 dollar increase, and again, these are actuals. And then the middle column, the tuition budget, so for 25, 26 this year, we had budgeted 2.9 million. And estimated right now, based on enrollment, we're gonna be at 3.1, 3.2 million. Registration for these cyber charter schools went up 15, plus 15 net. An increase in regular ed by 19 and special ed actually decreased by four. So just wanted to let you know what our numbers are for the cyber charter schools. These are third-party cyber charter schools. Supplies and equipment, just again, looking at the, the cost increases, operational equipment replacement needs. And then debt service, like I mentioned, review and update our debt service plan that we have in place, meeting demand of the short and long term. So we will be issuing a bond in the spring, again, as a part of the debt plan to fund this campus project. This is just a visual of where all of our expenditures are. Majority is salaries and benefits. And between salaries and benefits and professional services, you make up about three-quarters of the budget. And it really doesn't change a whole lot. For revenue, you have your local earned income tax, you also have earned interest, but property taxes is a huge piece of that. State funding, I had to put up both fiscal years, 'cause I don't know either one, 25, 26, or 26, 27. So I'm not quite sure where we are there, but like I said, for these numbers that I put together, we're looking at what we had budgeted this year. And then federally funded, I'm not quite sure where we're, we're going with that. For revenue estimate, again, the, the pie chart has changed very slightly only because of that Ready to Learn grant that we received. This is just a, a history of where we have been and where we are now. It is 4.4 for our adjusted index. We are planning on recommending to, to adopt the resolution to not exceed the budget, excuse me, to not exceed the Act One index. Budget estimates, we're looking, our budget next year is, is gonna be about 115 million. We are, as I mentioned, we are gonna use some fund bal, fund balance, the assigned fund balance for technology. And then the total revenue, again, the state pieces, we're just, we're just putting into these numbers what we have budgeted this year, 'cause that's all we know right now. But we'll work, work at tweaking those numbers. Just Act One factors, Act One adjusted index is 4.4. Based on that, the maximum increase, which would provide us an additional revenue of 2.9 million. And then the accelerated budget opt-out resolution must be approved by January 29th, if you're staying below the, the adjusted index, which is what we're recommending. So before we move on to that item, I'll probably, we are recommending to do the, the opt-out resolution, so if you're okay with it, we can put that on for next week.
I know we're missing some people here, you know, so we just want, because we don't have some people here, but I think if we don't do it for next week, we could also do this at the reorganization meeting.
We could, yes.
And have this a motion then, because obviously we have a chance just to, to hear from any other board members, but I would think that's.
But we can wait till December if, if you're more comfortable with that.
I think we can, I mean, so we could do that. But I, but regardless, it is something that we would be recommending to look at, would be to do this resolution here. Remember, if you don't do the resolution, you have to put a budget out and then you have to go to referendum if you wanted to go beyond that. So the resolution is a logical thing to do. And there are some exceptions, but they just don't really, they're not really moving the needle at all. Okay? So we'll look at either next week or the December meeting.
Okay.
The reorg meeting. We won't have a whole lot of items on the December meeting, so we could do that too.
I have a quick question before she moves on. She went over a lot, thank you very much.
I'm sorry.
No. Back at the 25, 26 federal-state subside, held-back subsidies, held-back by the state. At the bottom, it has unearned interest of 60,000 dollars, which is relied on as part of our operating, but is that money that we'll not see? Because, so that's money that we're spending over savings or whatever, interest, whatever budget, because we don't have a budget from the state that we'll never see that money again.
So, yes, out, out of the 11.6 that we would've had by now, taking that money and investing in it, or just having it in some of those liquid accounts, but our earning interest, we're estimating about 60 that we would not.
Because the state didn't pass their budget.
Correct.
We, we had to pass, we're passing our next budget, next year.
Yes.
Second question. Back on the, the tuition for the cyber school, it's, I see it's 13,524 dollars a student that we paid in cybers. What's it cost us at Brick and Mortar School to educate one student?
Well, that is our per-pupil expenditure, that's what we're, so we're required to use that with how we.
No, that's for cyber school students, but what's it cost us?
It's very close to the same.
They take our, they take, yeah, it's very close to the same. So they take, that's one of the, the problems with this, is that the cost that we are required to pay is very similar to what we have to pay for students to be here, so they, they are recipients of all of the same funds that we would be spending on our students. When, when we look at what the cost to educate our students in virtual education is, it's not the same. But that's what we have to pay. So now that money, just to be clear, is that, you know, if you look at that pie chart and you go back to how much is state and local and all that, you know, even you figure what our subsidy is, you know, call it just a little less than a third of that, would be roughly about the amount that we get in a subsidy for each student. But that means then, that the rest of that is being made up out of local tax dollars. So the vast majority of that money, you could figure, you know, just shy of probably 2 million dollars or more. two million dollars or more is local tax dollars that is going out to pay out cyber charter schools. That has been our issue with this all along. And then when you look at this in terms of special education students, they take the average of all of our students regardless of what the need is. But we know that many of our students who have the most significant learning challenges are not going to be educated in a virtual environment, and yet we provide for that, but that's not something that's being provided there. But yet, they're able to take the average, and then we have to pay the average even though it's not anywhere near reflective of what the actual costs are.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and to top it all off, the amount that we pay them is a part of the formula that drives the increase to the per-student amount. So it's almost like a.
It's like getting taxed twice, yeah.
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
A lot, a lot of calculations in this, that it is very, unless you really dig into it, it's very difficult for just anybody in the public to understand how all this works and what really drives what expenses in a school district are. It's very difficult unless you really dig into the details of it. Any other questions about any, before we move on to the next section?
Quick question, when we look at the revenue side, in the last two years with all the development and it's going on in the district, Cornwall Junction, Cornwall Commons, that type of stuff, additional apartments, do we have any idea how much more that is bringing in?
I can't tell you offhand, but I can find out for you.
Okay, because that should be a substantial amount now, I would think, with all what's going on in the district, so.
It is, we also have some assessment appeals, too.
Yeah.
So that's always a challenge.
It'll be a wash, we don't know.
Some, there are years when, when we haven't had a lot of development growth where it has been.
Yeah.
And earned income, and I can remember back in the early twenty-tens where that was flat or even decreasing, so that's always, you have to be careful, like the auditor talked about, making conservative estimates because we know how quickly things can turn. And if you plan for that as part of your general operating course, and then you don't have, then that's the challenge. But hopefully it's to the good. We could find that out. Any other questions?
So the, the opt, the opt-out resolution that we're to vote on is that we're just not going to.
Exceed the index.
Exceed the index.
Which we're required to do by law, we must do that by the end of January. What we're saying is that we don't need to wait till the January meeting, we can do that next week or in December because we know that's what we would do. Nothing's really going to change between now and the end of January.
Yeah, so normally we would do what they call a preliminary budget. But we're opting now not to do that, but we're also committing to not exceed that four-point-four percent.
What, what if we get less from the state than we expect to get? That could cause an issue, I would say.
It could, now, but think about this then, is that if you were to do a budget, that budget would then have to go and go to a referendum. Vote in the primary. I think there.
I'm not suggesting we do that, I'm just saying.
I think there have been two or three in the state.
I understand, the, the big question, though, has to do with the state budget, like how much the schools are gonna get.
It does.
So, so we can confidently, I'm, I'm assuming from all the discussion here that we can confidently say that no matter what we get from the state, it's not gonna change our position on Act One.
I don't think so, I think we're gonna have to figure it out. You know, I think that's, that's really what the, what we, our takeaway from this is that whatever we do receive from the state in the budget, we have to figure it out. So it's kind of interesting because we'd have a choice of going to referendum, but then even to prepare a preliminary budget to go to referendum, how would you prepare a preliminary budget when you don't even know what numbers you're preparing that budget on based on this year?
Right.
So it would, it would be just really a whole bunch of gobbledygook. I mean, Jean would be, he'd be kind of making a lot of guesses in that budget to do that.
Right.
Especially the timeframe that it would take for that to happen.
And historically, the last ten years I'm looking at, we haven't gone over the index anyway. So hopefully we'll continue with Jean and her staff's great expertise of this stuff, plus our wonderful governor, if he passed a budget, we maybe know stuff, but.
That'd be nice.
Yeah.
And sixty thousand dollars is a lot of stage curtains, is all I want to say.
Absolutely, I'm with you.
That we're missing.
Hey, now wait, wait, they're fireproof stairs.
That's what they say. Fire resistant.
Thank you for sharing that, Mr. Benson.
That was my gift to you.
So even if they would approve a budget, that would be the twenty-five, twenty-six, and we're talking about twenty-six, twenty-seven.
So we're kind of, we're stuck between these two years here, yeah. So all this is there, Mr. Thomas, this is a, this is the opt-out resolution to say is that we would not exceed the Act One Index of four-point-four percent is what this is right here. It does not set what our final rate would be.
Correct. And not even our proposal, so our next step would be a proposed final where we would have a lot more information, because that one's only due at the end of May versus now. So, like you said, I guess the words were gobbledygook. They would put all those numbers together, and it really wouldn't mean a whole lot because we're so early in the stages here. To put that together would be, in my opinion, a waste of time, but that's what would need to happen if we would want to go, if we would want to go over the four-point-four.
And, and going over four-point-four would, would require a referendum?
Yes, we do have possibility of exceptions like special ed if there would be enough difference between two fiscal years. But I can't imagine that it would be enough to make a difference.
Any other questions? Do you want, would you like to take a break now, or do you want to? Well, we could do this now, I know you still have some other, you have the homestead, farmstead exclusions, and then we'll come back, and then we'll jump into that section right there under the Act One Property tax relief. So let's just take ten minutes, about ten minutes right here, and then we'll come back, and then we'll jump into that section, okay? Thank you.
Cruise go in there so just to clarify that all right we're going to go ahead and move on to property tax relief homestead farmstead exclusions this is a review that Mrs. Hens has done every year for people to try to encourage them to be aware of it and to apply.
Yes, so the Act One Property Tax Relief Homestead Farmstead Exclusion the tax reduction provides it was is provided through the Act One Tax Relief Act. State funds come from gaming revenues funds are received by the school district and passed on to approve property owners through a reduction on July 1. So this is actually one one it's the only fund that we received from the state this year. So we did actually receive these funds to replenish what we had reduced on the July 1 bills. Reduction is only for property where owners reside and then how does the property owner receive this relief? So I just wanted to this is just more of an FYI just so you understand this. Residents must apply for the exclusion with the Lebanon County Assessment Office. So these applications are completed and sent to the assessment office. If you move you must reapply so does the person that's moving into where you were they all have to reapply. But if you're in the same household on the same property you do not need to reapply. Applications are due March 1 for the July 1 billing and notices are mailed in January. So in the beginning of January they will be mailed out to any resident or any property that does not have an approved homestead farms or farmstead application. And we are required to do that we are required to mail out notices to those property owners that do not have an approved homestead on file. This is just a snapshot of what the mailing looks like again some people look at it and think that it is scam but it is not. It is something that we are asking you to complete and send to the assessment office. If you look at the next one it's the application again got to submit it to the assessment office by March the first in order to have that reduction on your July 1 bill. How do you know if you have an approved homestead application on file if you look at your property tax bill July 1? It is the second line down where it says homestead exclusion if you do not if you have a zero there that means that you do not have an approved homestead application on file. Now is this for your residence then I would tell you to complete that application as soon as you get it and send it in. If it's not your residence where you live then don't worry about it because hopefully you do have one on the property that you do own and you do live on that property. Act One Property Tax allocations are based on how much is being received from the state. This year we received 2.2 million and again this is money that comes in and goes right back out with the July 1 bills. Right now we have 10,488 homesteads approved and then 73 farmsteads approved. And tax relief per eligible homestead based on that 2.2 and dividing by the 10,000 is $210 rounded. That you would have gotten reduction on your property tax bill. And then the bottom line is just the assessed value equivalent of that $210. Again this is just informational purposes in the beginning of January there will there will be a mailing. We do have Keystone do that our tax collector so just putting it out there.
Questions about that? All right I think that's all the finance and business items for tonight.
Yes.
Anything else?
You're welcome.
Right thank you all right we're going to move on then to personnel.
Okay good evening for the personnel agenda for tonight. The first item is to accept the following separations from employment. Ty Erisman health and physical education instructor 50% Cedar Crest Middle School effective October 20 2025 or until released by the superintendent due to resignation. Dominique Damon Conlin curriculum leader math 3 to 5 50% effective with the start of the 2025-2026 school year due to resignation. Matthew Werner Youth Action Club 50% Cedar Crest Middle School effective with the start of the 2025-2026 school year due to resignation. Jonathan Miller food service helper 4.5 hours Cedar Crest Middle School effective October 17 2025 due to resignation. Shannon Correa Reyes personal care assistant 6.5 hours Cornwall Elementary School effective November 4 2025 due to resignation. And those listed on the agenda with an asterisk will continue with the Cornwall Lebanon School District as a substitute. Approve the following requests for leave. Antonellis Amador food service helper 4.5 hours Cedar Crest Middle School child bearing leave effective approximately December 3 2025. Amanda Klein certified school nurse South Lebanon Elementary School child bearing and child rearing leave effective February 17 2026. Next ratify the following change in employment status. Maria Bickle from 50% to 100% curriculum leader math 3 to 5 effective with the start of the 2025-2026 school year at a salary of $2,357. Next approve ratify the employment of the following personnel pending completion of pre-employment materials. Gina Young Youth Action Club 50% Cedar Crest Middle School at a salary of $532 effective at the start of the 2025-2026 school year. Edward Perez and Stephen Dietz building custodian Cedar Crest High School at an hourly wage of $17. Timothy Spangler building assistant 6.5 hours Cedar Crest Middle Cedar Crest High School at an hourly wage of $15.45. And last approve volunteer coach Zachary Ryland girls lacrosse that concludes the personnel items for tonight.
All right it's November so a little bit shorter list than what we were doing pretty well with all of our positions Dr. Bosman is that correct?
Yeah we've done very well down to I think like two halftime PCA positions we've really done very well.
Good.
Dr. Bosman I'd like to just say that the job fair recruitment video that you and staff put out was very well done so thank you for doing that. I think it was really good it was catchy and I think it was a nice addition to what you usually do.
Yeah and that was Cody Hassler at the high school and their team just putting that all together and interviewing the folks who were there so they really captured the event it was very well done.
The high school also was involved with that video oh that's good to know it was very good.
Any questions about personnel? All right thank you go to policy management next. And the Lebanon County TCC agreement renewal Mrs. Hens?
Yep this is an annual agreement that we have with the Lebanon County Tax Collection Committee. Cornwall Lebanon has been the administrative support for a very long time and continues to do that. So we'll ask for your approval to provide the support in 2026. This is just a placeholder we the audit would be in the policy and management section so again the audit was went smoothly. Barbara Kane Thornton was this is their first of three years as a part of the agreement. And they did complete it onsite and remotely in August and September and it was a clean audit with no findings including a single audit. So hopefully we'll receive those guidelines and we can finalize this this audit. So probably December I'm looking at but we'll see.
Policy review these are policies that we do have on the agenda for final adoption. These are ones that we placed on the table last month so these will be on next next week's agenda. Nothing that was substantive with these a lot of language I think 233 there were some things changed in there more just to make it the formatting consistent because it hadn't been looked at in quite some time. And then we have two new policies to place on the table these are payroll authorization. And you'll see the only change of that is it takes out that it the policy requires the biweekly payroll that does not mean that that is changing. But it does mean that we do have some things that we do not pay biweekly stipends that people might receive or for extra co-curricular so it really reflects reflects that. And those things are codified in other places as well in terms of that. So we're not making any changes to it it's just that it's making the policy align with the fact that not everything is like that. It's a pretty general policy and then payroll deductions the one item there I think was just again these are reviews of policies that are having been looked at in a while that the district authorizes the payroll deductions. And we use different language there to say that well if someone's having money withheld for a 403B or for health equity well it's not actually the district authorizing it's the employee that is approved and the district's approving that. So just to make sure that that is clear so those are only two changes on those policies. I think that's all the items we have under policy and management any questions about those items? All right and now we're on to pupil services and food service and Ms. Rodriguez you are finally up.
The gentleman before me he was really tall so okay so hello everyone as always it is a pleasure to present our semi semi annual report for food service. First I'd like to start off our presentation with great news this school year we have not only seen an increase in lunch participation but breakfast as well. In total we have seen an increase at all levels with about 180 meals per day. Some of this can be attributed to offering higher protein choices like breakfast sandwiches two times a week at the elementary level. And I also want to let you know that we have begun the process of removing added sugars from our menus meeting the new USDA requirements. So as we move as we move into the next school year we will meet the challenge of even more sugar reduction from our menus. We've also done some free school breakfast promotion online and we think that that has helped with participation. I do also want to mention here that we've seen 180 meals per day increase so far only through our numbers of August and September. October's numbers are not in this so we anticipate that we're seeing a large participation jump. So as breakfast meals continue to be free we have seen that our free and reduced percentage for the district has remained steady. Our district stands at 43% free and reduced for this school year and as you can see on the screen here is a breakdown of some of the numbers laid out by school. Cornwall Elementary is at 34% Ebenezer 47% South Lebanon 41% Union Canal 63% and middle school and high school are at 40%. So we encourage we continue to encourage all families who believe they qualify for free and reduced priced meals to apply. Families of four can now qualify for free meals up to $60,000 a year. And also we received some calls about the recent government shutdown but I do want to make it clear that the free status for school meals regardless if through application or through SNAP there remains no change. We will still continue to provide free meals USDA is funded through October so we do not see any concerns there. Now while it was a busy summer for us we were able to hire a few new faces to our department and even from and promote from within. And while these faces you see on the screen do not encompass all of our new staff here are some new managers and assistants. So we have Emily Risser our new high school kitchen manager she was promoted from Union Canal. We have Alexis Castle from Cornwall Elementary she comes from us to us from Jersey Mike's. Elizabeth Valgus at Union Canal Elementary she comes from Hilton Hotels. Our new assistant manager at Ebenezer is Amanda Hotzman and she was promoted from within. As well as Irene Freed our new assistant manager at South Lebanon was also promoted from within. So along with hiring we focus heavily on purchasing equipment through our most recent bid in which you approved in June. We were able to purchase a total of six new warmers four coolers and two new steamers. Our staff is very appreciative of the new equipment and its technology especially our items that keep foods hotter for longer without drying them out. We're also slowly working on updating kitchen items as at the high school this year as we prepare for the remodel. So a few things to look forward to this year includes our Project PA culinary knife skills training class. In April of last year we were granted funding for this class through the USDA farm to school event sorry farm to school grant which was which has allowed us to do a tailored training to meet our needs. And as we aspire to add more scratch-ready recipes Chef Bill from Project PA will help train us on knife skills cooking and how to prepare farm-fresh ingredients. This will be a one-on-one class where we separate about half of the department into sections and Chef Bill will do a wide demonstration using our ovens and our kitchen skills kitchen equipment to show our ladies how to make better home scratch recipes. So as we also aspire to introduce new creative menu options this year we have already started meeting this goal by introducing the ramen bar at the high school. That day we served nearly 450 servings of soup to high school students and they loved it. It was great to see such excitement over whole grain noodles and broth but it was a win. And as a team this summer we attended over four food shows and we anticipate bringing new I new menu items and recipes as we move away from supply chain shortages. So now as I end my presentation I'd like to formally introduce you all to our food service intern Michael Brunz. Michael comes from Ohio he is a Penn State graduate student who aspires to be a registered dietitian and hold the same credentials as I do. With his degree he is required to complete an internship of 1,000 supervised hours and he has completed 250 of those here at Cornwall Lebanon at in food service. So yes, once again, thank you for your support, and that is the end of our presentation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily, and thank you also for that video you put together and all the time and energy that you put here during your internship with Cornwall Lebanon, so we appreciate that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments on people services and, people services, food service? Keep the good meals coming, right? All right. Okay, we'll go to technology and transportation. I believe we have one item here, Dr. Murray.
Thank you very much. Just a quick update, this is a piece that I've been asking almost annually now. It's part of E-Rate. If you're not familiar with E-Rate, it's basically, there's a little tiny tax that's taken off of your phone bill, and that goes into a very large account in the federal government, and they use that to fund communication projects. And a lot of the communication projects go to state and other municipalities, along with schools and libraries, to help connect everything together. So this would be like the data, the fiber, things of that nature that connects and creates the network, the internet, the infrastructure. We use a lot of this for our connectivity to all of our buildings back to our IU-13 for internet services, but then we also use this within the buildings locally as well. It's called E-Rate. And for the last two years, what I've been doing is using E-Rate to offset some of the cost that we use to update our infrastructure. So that would be like the wireless access points, the switches that allow data to go from place to place, things of that nature. So to do this process, I need a couple different approvals from the school board. The first one, I need permission to go out to bid. So this would be a board action that I'm asking for next week. And what I'm asking for is permission to go out to bid for the access points and the data switches that would go here in the high school. So a little bit of background with the high school, of course, we're upgrading everything. More things are becoming digital. So we currently have five network closets, six network closets here in the high school. We're moving that to 14 closets because we're connecting everything, lights, HVAC, everything you can think of with wireless, the clocks, intercom, so on and so forth. So there's a lot more connectivity, so we need to expand our current infrastructure. So we're working on that. And E-Rate is going to help us offset that by 60%. So E-Rate will take 60% of the cost, and locally here, we'd only pay 40% for all the equipment. So I'm going to ask to go out to bid for that in November. Then January, once everything settles down, we're allowed to post for those proposals. It takes about a month that I have to leave it out for bid. And then once we do that, I can select a vendor as the winning vendor, and then probably in February, we'll come back and I'll ask for approval of that equipment.
So we've used E-Rate funds before for some different parts, but this is a, you know, regular way, and it's kind of planned incorporated with the things that are going on here at the high school.
Exactly. This is part of our hardware cycle, our hardware replacement cycle that we have, so we don't acquire large infrastructure bills. We've now paced this out over multiple years, and this is a way to kind of keep that infrastructure cost at bay and kind of a consistent cost throughout the years.
So we would have an action on next week?
Yes.
For permission to go out to bid for this and then hopefully approve this in February?
Yes. Okay. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Murray. So those are the items that the administration has to present to the board. Are there any questions from the board about any of the items that we have presented or discussed this evening? Are there any questions from anyone in attendance about any of the items that we presented or discussed this evening? That concludes our items, Mrs. Schlegel. Up for presentation.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Dr. Demensik, and thank you all for your thorough reports. We really do appreciate it very much. At this time, I will announce that we will have an exec session for the purpose of a student discipline issue. But at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Will we adjourn? A second?
Motion and a second to adjourn. This meeting's adjourned. Thank you.